I missed you greeting me at the doors.
You're open.
It's hard to get in good health these days. All right, good morning. Let's call this Rankin County Board of Supervisors meeting October 13th, 2017, to order. We'll start this meeting with an invocation, and I think we'll defer to Mr. Slay if you don't mind.
I'm so grateful for the opportunity to have you before you first, before we start this meeting. Obviously, your presence here with us is so meaningful. We thank you for the blessings that you give to us, the way, Father, that you provide for us. Thank you for giving these men wisdom and sermon, and I pray, Father, that you will heighten that today, that as they consider the business of the county on this other way, that's pleasing to you, and that is in keeping with the goodwill of the people of this county. Father, I pray that our first responders and those who protect us so well, that they'll be blessed, that their families will be blessed as a result of their service to our community. I pray this in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Slay. Item number three on our agenda, public comments and recognition. We'll start with item A. Mr. Cobb, Brandon, you here? Good morning. Mosquito report.
Good morning.
Morning.
It's getting that time of year where we start slowing down. Our mosquito counts have already started dropping. This cold weather, hadn't quite driven them off yet, but we're headed that direction. We've been doing, still doing the spring and trapping larva sighting, same as usual, but the last couple of weeks it started to slow down a little bit. I'm looking towards end of October to where it's down to a crawl. Of course, we'll continue through November, but it's going to be more spots here and there than continuous spray as we've done through the summer. And, of course, different factors, the weather, rain, stuff like that, population counts, will slow down until about the end of November, and then we'll shut down for the season.
Great.
Is there any questions for me?
Steve? I know we talked about Pisgah High School at one point. Did you have a swing back by out there?
Yes.
Got carried off a couple of times, didn't we?
Yeah.
Yep. I think that was one area, so.
Yeah, we've been out to Pisgah High School, I think, three times total this summer.
Good.
But we went out there a few weeks ago.
Are they at home tonight? Pisgah at home tonight?
They are not.
Happy to have you.
Happy to have you. He's homecoming.
Uh-uh.
If anybody here wants to come, tickets are cheap.
And I think there's plenty still available, huh?
There's going to be some of that.
Bob, anything else? Becky, Jerry? Jay?
I'm good.
All right.
Thank you, done a good job.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. And we appreciate you.
Thank you.
Very much.
You've done a great job.
All right, item B, risk management partners. Guy, good morning.
Well, this is the time of year that we go over the insurance renewal, work with all the incumbent agents. We did not have any inquiries from any other agents that would like to quote it, so we requested that each one of the current agents give multiple bids on each line.
Thank you.
And I know y'all like just to be simplified as far as just seeing what we got.
Yeah.
Now, if you want to see more, Ms. Laura's guy.
This is much better.
I know it, I know it. But Ms. Laura's got each one of you a book that you can go through and see the other quotes and the other companies that quoted. But this is just the property, automobile, general liability, and volunteer fire. On the property insurance, it's with Stephen Wallace Insurance Associates. He did provide, I think it was about five different quotes. By far, the best quote was the current company that you're with, One Beacon. On the automobile insurance, that's with Dean Kirby. He did have an optional quote, and it's listed there on your sheet. And even though it's cheaper, I visited with Ms. Laura, I've actually had a conversation with the sheriff. The major differences here is the FCCI company that you're currently with will respond to little accidents, bump-ins, if deputies at a convenience store and backs into your car. Technically, the law reads that you're not liable, but when you're sitting there trying to appease people in Rankin County, they expect you to pay. Well, travelers, and we actually called travelers and had the conversation, they will not respond, where FCCI will respond. So there is a price difference there, but in my opinion, it's worth it because you haven't got to have very many claims to eat up the little savings.
And goodwill.
And goodwill.
Especially if it's our fault. Not until that ever happens.
And I want to go back to the property portion. That did have like a 4% rate increase, which is very good in the marketplace. And even after having the other quotes, it was by far the best.
You're paying like a 17 cent average rate on your property because you've got a huge amount of property that were insured and it's good property. That's a great rate. I mean, we've had a good rate for a long time, but that's really, still a really good rate even with the 4% increase.
The general liability is with Insurance Associates, Stephen Wallace, and it's actually flat. The rate is flat. The increase is simply due to the budget. It goes off of the budget.
They rate you based off, that's what they consider the exposure, you know, you're doing in the county.
Laura, we can fix that. Appearance.
And then there at the last, the volunteer fire department. You're with a very specialty-type market there, and it's written through Wellington and Associates. It is a rate increase that's strictly due to claim activity. I mean, they've been hammered pretty good, and they've stayed pretty strong on the rates, so.
Not this year, but the prior two years, we've had some legitimate claims that happened on hydrant. So they've really got hammered for good, but they still stay pretty strong.
We appreciate y'all allowing us to work with these agents, and they all did a very good job. And our recommendation's going to be option A, and the major difference is the auto leaving it with FCCI, even though it's a little more of a price difference, but it's, that's the reason, it's well worth it, in our opinion.
Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Questions? Bob?
Nope.
Jerry?
Good.
Good. Thank you, Guy, very much. Appreciate y'all.
Make our job easier.
All right, under the public comments, had a couple sign in. It wanted to say a few things. Again, our public comments, we're limited, everything's around three to five minutes. And we'll start with Mr. Tripp Francis.
Yes, sir.
Is that right? Good morning, Mr. Francis, how are you?
I'm doing just fine. Thank y'all for having us.
And if you would, please, sir, if you would, just introduce yourself to the board.
Yeah, my name is Tripp Francis, and I'm president of Reliant Medical Transportation, who is serving Rankin County. This is my partner, Dan Patterson. We have some providers in the back from local nursing homes that are here to speak as well just a little bit on our behalf, but what we're here really today is to introduce ourselves to you, and we certainly thank you for allowing us that opportunity. I provided each of you with a little packet, and I'll just hit on some, just a few things that I wanted to let you know what we're doing, but we're a BLS transport. And if you drove up, you saw the Mercedes Sprinter outside with Reliant on it if you came in the front door. We provide services to dialysis units, nursing homes, hospitals, anybody that wants to call us directly for transport by stretcher. We are not part of any county call system. We do not want to be a part of any county call system. We are not 911 service. We are offering just a service for someone who wants to call us for stretcher transport instead of, you know, wheelchair. I gave a copy, or you have a copy, in the back of our license to operate in Rankin County by the Department of Health. Both of our vans have been certified by the Department of Health, so that's really what we came here. And that's about all I have to say, unless y'all have questions for me, but we're just, we're happy to be here.
All right. Thank you. Steve?
Where's your office out of?
13 North Town Drive, Jackson, Mississippi.
How long have y'all been here?
Dan and I got the vans December, and we've gone through the process of getting them ready, staffing, you know, getting Medicare approval.
August 15th was our first run.
Yeah, August 15th was first run.
This year?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. All right, thank you, Mr. Francis.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Very much.
Thank you.
Also, I had one sign in. Mr. Patterson, do you have anything? You were on the sign-in sheet.
I just covered everything. I don't want to take up any more of your time, but we do appreciate the opportunity to speak to you today.
Great. Thank you very much. Mr. Chad Blackard?
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Blackard. If you would, just introduce yourself.
My name's Chad Blackard. I work with Brandon Court, a skilled nursing facility here in the county. This is Raymond Berger. He is with Brandon Court, Brandon Nursing Rehab. Holly is with Wisteria. We are the three nursing homes here in Rankin County. We have used Reliant. We have enjoyed their services. Specifically, our residents have enjoyed their service. They're very efficient. And as care providers, we would like to do business with those providers that can provide our residents the best care. So as far as we are concerned, we would like to continue to use Reliant.
Right. Thank you very much, Mr. Blackard.
Thank you.
Thank you for what y'all do at the nursing homes. I know it's a tough job.
Absolutely.
All right, anything else under public comments? All right, seeing them, we'll move into item four, old business.
So moved.
Got a motion to approve old business?
Correct.
Motion by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any approve with a like sign. Motion is approved. Item five, consent agenda?
So moved.
Got a motion by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Gaines. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed with a like sign. Item five passes. Item six, Ms. Fortenberry, how are you doing this morning? Good morning.
First, I want to say that we started our new tag and title system on Monday. It's a statewide system that we all had to come up to par to get on, and I want to thank y'all for being so gracious in helping us with equipment and training and all the things we had to go through to get to this point. And we are learning. It's a new system totally, but we think it's going to be really good, so just want to thank you for your help. My agenda is the approval of the year-end reports that I give you each year regarding delinquent taxpayers.
So moved.
All right, got a motion by Mr. Morrow to approve, second by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed with a like sign. Item B.
I thought you'd be to pay our 2017-18 make-up membership dues, and these dues cover registration fees for both conferences, and also wish to ask for approval for, to attend the fall conference, November 6th through the 8th in Biloxi.
So moved.
Got a motion by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Gaines. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed with a like sign. Item B passes. Thank you, Ms. Fortenberry. Ms. Herring, good morning. Item seven.
Good morning. My first item this morning is to award the bid 18-300-03 for the Lowboy tractor truck. The recommendation is the sole bid received from Tri-State Truck, unit price $122,066 for the sixth month, guaranteed buyback of $57,500.
So moved.
All right. Motion by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed with a like sign. Item A passes. Item B, Ms. Herring.
The second item is also for the bids opened from October 2nd for the hydraulic excavator. Our recommendation is to reject those bids and authority, get authority to advertise, re-advertise.
All right.
So moved.
What was wrong with those bids?
There were several things with the specs that we just need to clean up and start over. The dates, the years of the model of the vehicle, Mike.
One thing Mike mentioned, I thought he mentioned earlier, was the year. He's trying to get 2018.
We've been asking for 18 models, and they don't stop making 18 models until next month. We have 30-day warranty on it, but they all signed it, sent it back to us, saying they could. They come down, we're like, we're so. They had to pull the issue together.
Second.
All right, so, Mr. Morrow, was that your motion? Motion, Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Bishop, now third by Mr. Gaines, I don't think one. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed with a like sign.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Herring. Item eight, Mr. Slay, good morning again.
I make a motion. We set items A through H for November 2nd public hearing. Did I get that right, Mr. Slay?
You got it right. Thank you, Mr. Morrow.
Well, I want to ask.
All right, let me get that discussion. All right, got a motion by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Bishop to set a public hearing for items A through H. Any discussion?
Yeah, I just want to ask, I want to say, on this C?
Yes, sir.
I'm aware of that thing. This, I need to talk about that one between now and then. This guy is really kind of a victim of circumstance because I know that's the trailer that was cut in half, has drug on his property, and, but he owns the property. So I had a long conversation with him actually last night. He wants to do whatever he needs to do, and he's trying to get it removed, but he's worried that he won't be able to get it off. He won't be able to get the guy to get it all removed, and so I just went through everything. I want y'all to know that he is, he is the property owner, but he's not the owner of the problem. So I want to try to work with him, provided they're doing something. So I just want y'all to be aware of that.
Okay.
I have a question on F.
Good.
I'm trying to think on Pisgah Road, and Daniel, when I'm on Pisgah Road on my side, I'm.
Oh, wow.
John, can you tell me, I mean, that road is only a quarter mile of road. 25, 500?
All right, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed with a like sign. Motion passes. So, public hearings, Mr. Slay?
Yes, sir. Item I is a public hearing on the Holly Ridge Properties LLC rezoning request that stopped Stump Ridge and Holly Bush as District 4 property. Conrad Gilmore of Holly Ridge Properties LLC is seeking to rezone 63.38 acres on the northeast corner of Holly Bush and Stump Ridge from A1 to RE1. He is proposing to subdivide the property into 13 lots. All of the lots will front on the public road. No lot will be less than three acres. Restrictive covenants that are presented for review state that each home must have a minimum heated and cooled square footage of 2,200 square feet. This time, we'll open that public hearing. I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the Holly Ridge Properties LLC rezoning request. Anyone here to speak in opposition? Will come forward, please. I'll need you to state your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Aaron Carr. I live at 1277 Holly Bush. So I come here, I was kind of wanting to see exactly what their intent was. I own the adjacent property to the east of it.
On what road?
On Holly Bush. So this is off Stump Ridge and Holly Bush. Couple things. Right now, I'd like to see a plan of how they're going to handle, excuse me, the watershed of this, because currently, there's a small creek running through that property, and it all runs kind of too adjacent to my property, crosses my driveway, crosses Holly Bush. Being out there, you guys know, when you do get heavy rains, I get some water already across my property, but it will cross Holly Bush at that location. So if you're going to develop this, they're obviously going to build building pads up, everything else, excuse me. So I'd like to see how all this watershed's going to be handled, because if not, it's going to flood, they're going to push all the water onto my property. And it's already kind of an issue out there off Holly Bush. I believe the culvert going underneath Holly Bush is too small, so that means all the water's going to back up onto me.
Does the water run from Stump Ridge to you, or from you to Stump Ridge?
Runs from Stump Ridge to me.
So if a bigger culvert would put more water on you, right?
It's not crossing Holly Bush fast enough. The water on the other side of Holly Bush, it goes onto Mr. Almond's property, and it slows down right there. So there's a creek that comes around, it goes into the woods to the right, but all that other water on that property sheds off. So I'd like to see how this is going to be handled before any decisions are made. Furthermore, that thing is zoned agricultural, and it's zoned agricultural for a reason. And my thing is, if it's this easy to rezone stuff, you know, what's the point in zoning anything? You know, why zone anything in Rankin County?
Well, we do have a thing called growth.
I understand.
And if we don't have, you know, capability of rezoning property, we won't ever have any new subject, because most variants that new subject's going in are primarily agricultural.
I get this. But this goes to, would you let me rezone my property, make it commercial property out there? Probably not.
We have. We presented, we looked at it.
Yeah.
We have had some go commercial on Holly Bush.
Okay.
There are some differences out there.
Okay. So I'm here just to ask, take a look at this. We need to address the water issue, the main concern I have. So I just asked you guys to take a look at this before, hold on.
We have, I mean, that was part of, the review was the engineer requires a water study to be done, and there is a creek that runs through the middle. In fact, I think there's actually two out there. But, and that's part of it, and before, we can improve that they have to submit a watershed project.
Okay.
So we are looking at that.
Okay.
Just as a reminder, this is a consulting matter. The issue of water is a problem, and that comes. We don't want to get into all of that unless we know that the work is meaningful, we just think it's only going to end with, otherwise, it's a two-step process. This is a zoning piece. Development piece is still pending.
Completely taken.
They have issues like drainage coming, coming.
On your behalf, I don't know how to say this. I have been very conservative about what is coming off of Holly Bush and that, like, we have, we've had them rework their plans or surveys because I didn't want to give any driveways coming out of Holly Bush, cut them down to like that creek, something like that. And the developer has done everything he's asked me to. I think it will enhance the properties around it, and like Jay says, you know, I really feel like that we have cities and we've got urban areas, we have commercial areas, we have rural areas, farm areas, and that's what's great about Rankin County is we have diversity, and I want to keep it, but I cannot, you know, somebody who's been working with real acres, family for years, maybe generations, that they can't sell it, they can't develop it.
Oh, I understand that. I understand that completely.
As long as we do it to where it's not a deterrent, where it doesn't make your property less valuable, or your standard of living a different. These are big lots. These are not small, and these homes are going to be big, nice homes. And we're trying to make sure the developer does everything that will make your life better, your property more valuable, and also keep our rural feeling out there where you are.
I understand. I'm, the main concern I have is with the watershed of this.
That'll come later.
And I don't want this to get rezoned, and then, like you said, then that's a development issue, but it's already rezoned, and then, you know, now I'm dealing with the problem when there wasn't an issue.
Rezoning will have anything to do with that one. It won't just be rezoned.
Well, it will be allowed.
It will be allowed, and then it's an issue prior to being rezoned.
Yeah, but you're going to still, hell, the drainage will have to be addressed after that, either way.
That's why I'm not wanting to take on all the water.
Just, you let me know.
Okay.
If there's any issue. I mean, now, I can't tell you that 20 years from now that we have a 12-inch, you're not going to have some water problems that you would have had whether we did this or not. Our plan is to have the developer take care of his water to where it's no more water leaving at a fast rate than it was before he ever developed.
That's the rule. Same amount of water leaving the site before development needs to be the amount of water leaving the site after development. That's the rule from the work from prior best statement stated in that. I want to also add one point, other than those off here, in context of this board considering, you may, impact private citizens' ability to take matters like drainage and harm being caused by this property. He is free and welcome to take that straight before. He always has that right. You're not going to take that away from him just by approving development activity around him. If he gets impacted by water coming off of an adjacent property on him, a courthouse and lot, he can always go and make that adjustment there.
But we're going to do what we can do. We're helping them.
We're going to do exactly what the county is going to do, is make sure that development activity meets our standards, meets our requirements. We can probably let you look at, give our engineer.
Okay, I'd like that.
And, you know, early in the year, you know, whenever we get that far.
Okay.
Would that be fair? Guy, I know, he's still got a little issue on, if he's got steel there?
I'll have to cut it down.
I've been staying, trying to stay away from it. I didn't know if it was that one or what.
I don't think I don't, I'm doing it.
You should cut it off, see if that's you.
Uh-uh. Uh-uh.
Okay, that's all I got. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
What was your name?
Aaron Carr.
Aaron, okay.
Thank you.
This is why you can't talk to me. Okay? All right.
Justin?
I was sure wanting to ask Justin a few questions if he came up to the stand. I got a few ready for you, so. You look good out there in that beard back there.
I make a motion, approve. Mr. Gaines, you okay with it?
Oh, yeah.
Got a motion by Mr. Morrison to approve, second by Mr. Bishop.
For rezoning.
The rezoning request, right. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed with a like sign. Motion passes. Mr. Slay?
Next item is the consideration of the statement of rezoning requests. This is a, it is very valuable to the community on how they will, and the request is to rezon this parcel from A to RE1. He is proposing to subdivide the property into five, seven acre lots that will all front on the public road. Restrictive covenants state that there can be no further subdivision, and each house shall have a minimum 2,000 square foot heated and cooling floor space. This time, we'll open that public hearing. I'll ask if there is anyone here speaking in opposition to speaking in support of his own request. If there is, we can. This, brother, I don't see anyone here speaking in opposition to that matter. We'll close that public hearing. This time, it'll be appropriate to take action.
Pleasure to the board.
Motion, if we say.
All right, got a motion to approve. Got a motion to approve by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed with a like sign. Motion passes. Item K, Mr. Slay.
Yes, that's a public hearing on the song from Thurman, additional use permit, that's 212 Deer Ridge Road, that's a District 3 property. The Thurman is seeking a condition use permit to replace her existing home at 12 Deer Ridge Road with a named ex home. She owns a one acre parcel that is zoned RE1. The existing home is in an unlivable condition. Yes, that's a public hearing, it's song, run Thurman, additional use permit, that's E212, Deer Ridge Road, that's a District 3 property. Mr. Thurman is seeking a conditional use permit to replace her existing home at 12 Deer Ridge Road with a manufactured home. She owns a one acre parcel that is zoned RE1. The existing home is in an unlivable condition. Mr. Thurman is seventy-one years old, he's applying to the Department of Public Health. Running a park, has emergency housing saved up to RE1. Public hearing, I'll ask if there's anyone here to speak in opposition to the song requirement, additional use permit. Anyone here to speak in opposition to that matter? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter. I recognize concerns here, along with our advocates. I don't know if the board has any new questions. Look at, if there's any questions, we will close that public hearing.
Make the motion to approve.
Got a motion by Mr. Moore to approve. Seconded by Mr. Gaines, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, a light sign. Item K passes.
I have a bill, it's a public hearing on Greenfield Station LLC rezoning request. It's District 3. Greenfield Station LLC is seeking to rezonate two parcels total of thirty-five acres from manufactured housing to R1D. Change to R1D will be consistent with zoning of all the property within the Greenfield Station subdivision and adjoining property to the north. At this time, we'll open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone here to speak in opposition to the Greenfield Station rezoning request. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in that matter. Not much of any questions, we'll close that public hearing.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve by Mr. Moore. Seconded by Mr. Gaines, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, a light sign. Passes, Mr. Slay, item, uh, M.
Item M is a consideration of our public hearing on the M Road rezoning request from Pat Carroll and Stacy Cresser, the road. As a reminder, Mr. Moore is seeking to rezonate approximately three hundred ninety-five acres that's on Carroll and Stacy Cresser Road from A2 to RE1. The preliminary flat shows sixteen lots. The restrictive covenants for the development state that no lot can be less than ten acres in size and, and the dwellings on the, in the subdivision must be a minimum of two thousand square feet of heated and cooled space. Mr. Rowe is here, to the extent the board has questions. The restrictive covenants were provided to me and have been executed by each of the property owners who own property there. As a reminder, there were three lots sold prior to the approval of the subdivision flat, which by the way is on schedule if, if we move forward. The flat itself is on schedule to be considered under Mr. Buster's section later. But each of the property owners, both the developer, who continues to hold title to, I think, thirteen lots, and the three other lot owners have all executed restricted covenants. I have reviewed restricted covenants and I find those to be acceptable in a suitable form. We are waiting for the developer, Dr. Abraham, his original signature on the way. We expect to get that today, but I do have the facts of property of his having signed that. We have evidence that he's signed. We're just waiting on the original, so we can file or have the restricted covenants filed. So as far as that matter is concerned, that part of it has to be this. So, this time we'll ask, is there anyone here to speak in opposition to the Jim Rowe rezoning request? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition, if you have questions, Mr. Rowe, Mr. Rowe is here with us.
Did you address the, the road that's going through there?
Yes, sir, as a part of restricted covenants, Steve, there is a, an updated preliminary flat. Now, can you, uh, Steve, help me with this? The version I've got here is a small version, it's hard to see. Steve, it's, it's shown on here.
There's actually two, one, it's gonna be five, but the one that's public.
Yes, sir, they're both, they're both delineated on the flat itself and the, this, this, yes, we're gonna have to see.
I apologize, I want to do this before the meeting started, for those of y'all that are here. We wouldn't have took this time up, but we did, uh.
He's only seven minutes. He's only seven minutes.
Gaines got it, he's taking a long one.
And he is aware that he's got to bring this up to some standards you were referring to.
Yes, that's, we've got the, the road up to County Stadium. And it's all a field set, and that'll be under construction plan, and it's after preliminary flat.
But they've already sold three lots, normally we make them do this before they sell lots.
Normally, you don't sell any lots until they have a final plan, which is after preliminary flat, after construction plan, and at the final plan.
My, hold on.
He's just gonna try to open those doors up, get a little air moving.
John is on the roof right now.
Um, oh, John is on the roof. We, we've gotten the, uh, cart way ahead of course, about seven lots before we have got a plan for it.
I could have gone there, but you're wrong, it'd be about there.
And even after a couple of lots were sold, three, there was some changes as far as the size of lots. We're back to where we were before, is that right, Mr. Rowe? Didn't have anything to do with rezoning, this would have been on the old, this would have been the same as the old, it's no difference. But, but after you sold, uh, say one of these twenty acre lots. And these people understood that there'd be no lot less than ten acres.
Correct.
And then you came in with some of five acres.
No, that was the.
That didn't happen.
Eighteen acres that I gave you, that was the original track, that was Stacy Cresser. I was giving him the track to look at that coast. And while I was playing, when I took a pencil, you know, highest and best used property, you could have rode from it, you know, so long. And I accidentally gave it to him, and I left, and then that particular flat came up, and, you know, I was showing him, he was following the stack of the north end, and he kind of needed his boot, was the surveyor, and rather than go around, he went to the corner.
Alright, 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 and, and some of that is probably, uh, not exactly true. You didn't accidentally walk in here with plans and give them to him while we were in the meeting, fixing to vote on it the last time, that's why we tabled it. Let's be upfront with this, okay? And they give one of the guys that's bought land in there and wants to put a three thousand square foot home, is very upset. Uh, and, and I've heard that you put that on me. I didn't tell him that there was gonna be twenty acre, ten acre lots and then go to five. I didn't, did I? Okay. I just want to get that clear on the record. No? Okay. Yes, sir, okay.
We don't want them to log lots, we want many farms, we want state lots, we want large, nice homes.
Well, I never mentioned five acres, you did.
No, I, I was picturing that, and I.
You give it to our engineers, so.
That was not a surveyor's plan, that was pencil.
Well, if it's surveyors or yours, that's what you give the engineer. And for us to approve at one of the last board meetings. Now, this is what we're gonna do.
That's what we're supposed to do right there.
Okay. This is what we're voting on today, and it'll be the same tomorrow, next year, and down the road.
And then the votes.
We'll follow the covenants to the end. Okay. Alright, I recommend we approve this plan.
Actually, Steve, you're gonna have a chance to do that very thing right there, coming up under Mr. Buster's saying. So all we're gonna do right now is approve the rezoning.
Zoning, okay.
Motion, Mr. Gaines?
Yes.
Alright, seconded by Mr. Bishop, any further discussion?
I think we covered it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, a light sign. Great. Other items, Mr. Slay?
Yes, forgive me, I got all the fronts up there.
That's alright.
Here we go. Uh, item N is a consideration of.
A request to appeal the decision of the Office of Community Development to deny the proposed sign for Cockrell's Farmers Market located at thirteen oh seven Old Fannin Road, District 2. If I may give you guys just a little bit of, um, context, so you've got a good feel for what this is. This piece of property is within the Reservoir Community District. The Reservoir Community District has sign ordinance regulations within it that are essentially placed over and above the underlying zoning sign ordinances of the county generally. So there are extra requirements that are found within the RCD sign ordinance. Is everybody okay there? So, it's not just look at the underlying sign ordinance and then determine, you gotta look at both the underlying sign ordinance and the RCD sign regulations to determine whether a sign in the RCD meets or does not meet those requirements. The proposed sign for Cockrell's Farmers Market does not meet all of the requirements of both the underlying ordinance and the RCD ordinance. There are multiple requirements in there, and it fails on a number of points. And so the Community Development Office rejected the sign application, denied it, because the sign didn't meet the requirements. That decision of the Community Development Office is now being appealed to you. So, this is kind of an unusual thing, but that's how it got before you. You're being asked to consider whether or not the decision made by Community Development as it relates to this particular sign is, in your opinion, the right decision or not.
Yeah.
And so that's a, that is a consideration that you have. Are representatives of the Farmers Market here?
Craig, I, I've spoken to them, and I told them there was no need for them to come in this morning, I would kind of display their thoughts and, and views on that side. So let me kind of expand a little bit more on the same side. This is a Farmers Market area that's right there on Old Fannin Road, that's extremely popular and do a large, uh, amount of business in that area. When they originally bought the property, there was signage that was in place on Old Fannin Road.
Right.
But that signage was grandfathered under the overlay district. So when they took possession, the signage, being able to have signs up for their business, no longer applies, they had to take the signage down. So now they don't have really any signs, or much signage that's out there. So what they're asking to do is something similar to what you see right here, there's a truck they're wanting to purchase. It's gated in area.
You got one on your plate, Jay, I mean, there's one over there.
Yeah, there's a handout, I think everybody's got one.
Handout on your stuff, look on your stuff.
Somewhere in your packets. Um, but either way, what they're wanting to do is, um, purchase this old antique truck, place a sign in it, and we gotta get the exact distance or the height on it right, maybe John can explain, expand a little bit on that. Put it inside their fence area just for signage, they're gonna plant nice flowers all, this isn't the actual picture of the site. This is, uh, something similar to what they're talking about. Um, it'll be back off the road, you'll see it kind of not blocking the entrance way or the roadway into it. And I think, John, what'd we say, eight feet, ten feet?
I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah, so twelve feet, but again, it's inside their gate, it's gonna give them some signage area. I think it's a good sale for where it's at, I think it's fine right there. So I'm gonna recommend approval on that, on that basis right there.
Same, good.
Motion by myself.
Second.
Jessica, and seconded by Mr. Gaines, I think you beat you to it, step ahead of, any further discussion on it?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we got to understand, but we do have a business out there that likes to abuse our sign ordinance and just to not allow them to go, but multiple, just so anyone else may think we're amending the rules for these guys.
And Craig, let me ask you this, once we, if this is approved and voted on and passed, uh, and the ownership changes hands, five, ten, fifteen years down the line, does it go back under the same kind of clause that?
I would, I would recommend that as a condition to your approving, uh, this, uh, appeal, that you would condition it to state that it is only applicable to the current owner of the property.
Add that to my motion if I can. Get with that, Steve.
Yeah.
Alright, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, a light sign. Motion passes. Uh, item O.
Item O is a discussion of and potential action to amend our ordinance, establishing a policy for our gated entries to residential subdivisions to include, if you can believe it, a specific reference to a requirement for a battery backup power supply where the subdivision does not provide a separate non-gated entry for emergency responders. Somehow, your illustrious attorney failed to make sure that that provision was in the original one that we approved. So I'm, I'm here to accept responsibility for that being out of there. It was covered. Uh, we did have language that would have allowed us to make sure that did happen, but it's, we feel like it'll be a whole lot simpler on everybody if we say that clearly in our document. And so we want permission to add the battery backup provision, which is paragraph numbered thirteen under section four B of our ordinance. And it specifically says, "Battery backup systems will be required for any proposed gating system installation where there is no non-gated alternative means of gaining entry to the subdivision."
So moved.
And a motion by Mr. Moore.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gaines, any further discussion?
Yeah, I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Who's gonna maintain, who's gonna make sure that batteries always?
The, the ordinance, thankfully, already has language in it, Jared, that makes that the responsibility of the developer or the HOA if the developer turns it over to the HOA, or to the residents of the subdivision if there is no HOA. It's on the private parties within the development.
Craig.
Yes, sir.
Just for clarity, even if the batteries don't work, the default is to, the gates will be open?
Yes, sir, we, we require as a part of the backup system that immediately upon power failure, the gates open.
They open automatically?
And they remain open until, they open automatically.
Reset, hold the bar.
It, it's set by the gate installer, and we're told, I had a fairly extensive conversation with, uh, Parker Ginn, who is one of the principals of Jeffco Fence Company, and he walked me through some of the system requirements that they, because Madison's regulations are very similar to ours, he's very familiar with how they spec their systems to comply with that ordinance. And so he, uh, he, they have mechanisms built into the unit that trip and automatically open the gates upon sensing power failure. And they stay open until the power is restored. Now, if the batteries are gone, then they, obviously, they won't return unless the power, unless the power actually is restored. That's the only way that the gate can come back to closed. Uh, we also have embedded in here, this is just a quick reminder, that if we've got to gain access, if our emergency responders have to gain access, they, they are authorized to use whatever means are necessary, including running the gate over if necessary. And it falls on the homeowners to cover all of the damage, both, both to their own system or to our truck. So the, you know, I want to make that clear on the record. As the subdivision developers and existing subdivisions are considering whether or not they want to have gated entries, they need to be aware of all of these requirements, and we try to be as detailed as we can. And they need to understand that the county has immediate authority to do whatever's necessary with respect to that gate, including taking it down and hauling it off.
And what, yeah, and one of those key things was, each, each time one of these gated areas wants to put one in, they've still gotta come back for our review.
That's correct.
Prior to putting it back in, for us to say, yes, this meets our specs, go ahead. So it's not just an open blanket clause, try to follow it and you never have oversight, so we do have oversight of it.
To that point, that's.
These can't be, be modified, whether, oh, uh, not automatic, I guess you'd say.
A code system? What, a code?
Automatic, but I'm just saying, uh, they can lock.
Yes, sir. What, if, it's a, it remains a public street, Jared, so.
I know that, but I've just, after time, some of them, I just wondered, why don't we just fix it where they can't come in?
Yes, sir, and that, that very well could happen. The ordinance is crafted broadly enough to where any action like that can be immediately undone. Law enforcement, a, a member of the road department, we, we may have to carry a bolt cutter around with us.
Alright, Mr. Slay, do you need a, uh, you have a motion?
Yes, yes.
Oh, we got a motion? Alright, so any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, a light sign. Item P.
Item P is, uh, basically is for discussion purposes. Uh, we looked at the possibility of using a new, brand-new statute that went into effect of July 1 that will allow for, uh, what I will describe as a much easier method of expanding certain fire districts in the county. Generally speaking, what we try to do, and what we try to accomplish through our fire services area, is we, we monitor and look at what's going on at the rating bureau and how that's affecting households and the potential cost of fire insurance premiums, homeowners insurance premiums, where you've got rural, especially rural settings, and they are outside of a particular distance from the firehouse. Uh, if we can maneuver these districts in such a way that within the bounds and the confines of the statute, to, to get more people into that response area, more houses into the response area, they will see a measurable positive impact on their homeowner's premium. response area, they will see a measurable positive impact on their homeowner's premium. So we looked at this new statute that does not require public hearings and petitions and notifications and voters and all that other hoot and nanny. The board, as a matter of course, under the statute, if it falls within the statute, is able to simply of its own motion, without the necessity of a petition, expand or modify certain protection districts to either include or exclude areas. Okay? So we looked at that statute and we looked at it in relation to Lake Harbor. And so the problem with Lake Harbor is, Lake Harbor is a taxing district. It's a fire, it is a classic fire protection district. They have tax levied authority. The statute does not allow board of supervisor only maneuvering of a tax district. We can do it for what's called a grading district. I don't remember how many tax districts we have. We have seven, which means that we have 12 grading districts, roughly.
May have a little more than that.
We've, we've got several grading districts, which means they don't have any taxing authority. We can maneuver those without petitions and hearings and all that other, but we can't do it for Lake Harbor. And so here's the discussion. If, if we need to take action to help Lake Harbor out, we need to move forward, and I need authority from you guys to move forward with a formalized petition that can be circulated among the affected residents to get the signatures that are required. We're going to need 25 elected, qualified elector signatures. That has to be reviewed. That'll come back before you. You'll receive that petition if we get the number of signatures that we need. Then you will instruct, or we'll have our surveys, surveyors through our consulting engineer, will actually get a survey of the area proposed. That will be the subject of a publication notice, and then we'll have a hearing on it, and then assuming that there's no objections, we will move forward to expand the district. But we've got to go through all that rigmarole. Before we do that, I need your, your authority to tell me y'all are ready to move forward.
Let me, let me give a little simplified explanation. I have three homes, one in particular, but three homes that are within one and a quarter mile on the road, driving road, driving miles of a fire station. And they're outside the district. And the district's supposed to cover a five-mile area, but the way that it's smushed up this way, they, they're left out. And their entrance rating is like a 10. It's double what it should be, what it was. And we want to massage that. These people are way closer than most of the people that are covered by the same fire station. And that's why we're here, and that's what we're talking about. But it's just that the bubble got pushed way to lopsided.
Yep.
And the population is kind of a lot, I mean, there's not a lot of population that way, but it's, it's unfair to these people that are, they can nearly go a rock and hit the fire station.
Right. So the state fire marshal used to let us basically take a string and run a two-and-a-half mile radius all the way around that station, and whatever fell inside that two-and-a-half mile radius, five miles diameter, whatever fell inside that circle, whether it was in the district or not, got the benefit of being that close to the firehouse. Does that make sense? They took that away and said, now we're only going to rate it on the basis of whether it's in the district or not, regardless of whether it's inside the circle or not. So now it's critical for us to know how our districts are actually configured. We can't just draw a circle around the firehouse anymore. And we've got some districts.
That should go road miles now, doesn't it?
Yep, sir.
It's road miles now.
The districts themselves have to be configured in such a way that they stay within the confines of the commissioner's regulations. So we can't have a district that's 20 miles across.
I know, but I'm saying that I think it's in it like some of these road miles from the fire station.
Yes, sir. I, I think they still use the road mile, Jared, to determine whether the districts are, are appropriately sized.
Two nine tenths of, nine tenths of miles from the fire station.
Flanks down there.
Yeah.
So all I'm looking for you guys is to tell me whether you want to proceed with a petition for the Lake Harbor folks to address this.
I would proceed.
Absolutely. You need a motion or just?
You know, it wouldn't hurt just to have a motion.
A motion by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Morrow. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, a light sign. All right.
No, it's on there.
It's item P.
You want to?
Do you want me to add it again?
Well, Jay's being technical with us.
No, no, by all means, just go for it. Usually, you're the one hammering me on it, right?
You taught him well, though, Mr. Slay. You're a good soldier now, Jay. Good soldier. Mr. Parker?
Yes, sir.
Good morning. That's right. That's right. Slay's not happy, nobody's happy, you know?
You're making coffee, please.
All right, good morning, Mr. Buster. Item number nine on our agenda.
That's right. Item A is, is the Clark Creek Farms, and I'm recommending approval of those construction plans today.
Okay. Pleasure.
I think it's my district. Yeah.
All right, motion by Mr. Gaines. Second. Second by Mr. Morrow. Any further discussion?
For the future, it'd be, it'd be good if we had a district where we, where some of them I know, but I don't know their names.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
I'm trying to make sure.
I just thought I know the name of the district.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, a light sign. Item B, Mr. Parker.
Item B, Sawgrass Lakes, Part II, Part III, and Part IV. And we're recommending approval of that preliminary plat today.
So moved.
And motion by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, a light sign. Item C.
Next, next item is Leesburg Estates, which y'all have been discussing some.
This was one of the topics earlier.
This is what we're talking about right here.
And, and I make a motion to approve it.
This is the preliminary plat now.
Preliminary plat. With Mr. Bro, working very close with you, and no more changes as far as lots, house, square foot, or road.
Very good.
All right, motion by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, a light sign. Item D.
Item D is Little Woods, Phase 1. We're making, we're recommending approval of that final plat, which is, you know, that's a road out of Andrew Chapel. And the reason it's called Phase 1 is Phase 1, they just had some shoulder work to do on that existing county road in there. And that's what, that's what this is for, the final plat. They have come in and done some work on the shoulders on that existing road. There'll be another phase where there's actually some development going to go on.
I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
Is the private road in Little Woods Phase 2?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
The reason is, I don't want to get too far down the road and not take care of that. There's a road that goes through Phase 2.
Yes, sir.
I don't want it to be where we don't have any leverage to make sure that road is where we want it to be.
Oh, no. No, we will.
Like, it's not by the whole of these, all of these lights, right? These people that live around here, concerned about this. And that has been going on for a while. We're not the way of selling a lot with here patents. We're happy with that, so we're. I have been wanting to tell you about this concern, but I guess if we're not uprooting in lots of here, it will. On the, on the, on the county.
Mr. Gaines, do you have a motion? Motion by Mr. Gaines to approve, second by Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, a light sign.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buster. Have a good day. Laura Oster, item number 10.
Thank you. The first item I have is approval of the amended FY17 budget.
And a motion by Mr. Bishop to approve, second by Mr. Morrison. Uh, Mr. Morrow, I apologize. Mr. Morrow, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, a light sign. Item B, Ms. Laura.
The next item is.
Research to approve.
All right, got a motion to approve by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, a light sign. Item B, Ms. Laura.
The next item is.
Research to approve.
All right, got a motion to approve by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, a light sign. Item B, Ms. Laura.
The next item is.
Research to approve.
All right, got a motion to approve by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, a light sign. Item C, Ms. Laura.
Thank you. Authority to execute the MDOT State Aid Certification Form for Sub-Award Executive Compensation Reporting for the Transparency Act.
All right, motion by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Gaines. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, a light sign. Item B, Ms. Laura.
Authority to enter into an MOU with the Mississippi Administrative Office of Courts for the program to provide an attorney for indigent parents whose parental rights are subject to termination with a funding match of $30,000, and that was put in the budget. It's a program that's been going on for several years. They're expanding the program because of the success, and they're asking counties to contribute. And we did put $30,000 in at Judge Broom's request, and that will be our portion, which is not a 50, it's less than a 50% match, but it appoints an attorney for parents that their parental rights might be revoked or terminated.
Have we been paid?
No, we have not paid. It's been fully funded in the past several years that the program's been out there. But we, he knew it was coming, and we did budget for it. It is in the budget, that amount.
Why is it because I have? Explain that again.
It appoints an attorney for families that could have their parental rights terminated or in some fashion, a child removed or whatever. It helps appoint an attorney for them, indigent parents.
There's nothing, there's nothing already out there that does this. We don't have a county attorney that would fill in that gap or anything. I mean, if this doesn't happen, they just are not represented.
That's, that's, that's potentially correct, yes, sir. They are, they are indigent, and they show up to court and they terminate parental rights, but they do not have representation.
Is it required to be represented in that court?
The ACOU says that.
So if a parent is going through divorce, child custody situation.
Yes, sir.
So we're going to have a lot of parents that I can't afford an attorney now, have some money to pay for their legal fees on child custody.
Where there is a request for a termination of parental. This is a precursor to an adoption. You have to get a TPR in order for the adopting parent to be able to become an adopting parent. The natural parent has to either consent to the termination of their rights, or they have to be adjudicated to not have parental rights. It's, it's narrow. I don't expect there to be a whole lot of this, but you will. You will have occasions, Jay, if you think about it, probably more and more. This shows up most of the time in grandparent situations where the child, the parent-child, the, the, the child who is a parent.
Right.
Is drug addicted and struggling and cannot get all, and wants the child to be cared for and wants the child to be adopted. Their parental rights have to be terminated. The technical reality is, we have lots and lots of groups out there who say, those people, before they sign a document that says, "I'm giving up my parental rights," are entitled to legal representation. And if it's not provided for them and they are indigent, then the county will be hauled to federal court to answer for that.
And, and I think every one of these, that it happens on, this is all going to be cases that come through the youth court.
Mostly. They'll be in Chancery Court, but most of the time, the Chancery Court judge is able to appoint what's called a guardian ad litem for the child who is reviewing the issue of the termination in the context of that. So this is unique to youth court. He's not adjudicating an adoption. He's adjudicating whether or not that parent should have parental rights.
Before this, how did this, how was it handled?
This, they have had a program. This program that this is part of has been out there for several years. We've participated in it. But because it has grown, and now the law says that they must have an attorney, then they're asking now, because they're expanding the program for the counties that participate in it, to put up some money. The judge knew this was coming, so he requested that we put in $30,000 into our budget, which we did. And now they're asking to enter into this agreement and use this funding.
To answer your question, how it was handled, the youth court judge took, essentially took on the responsibility of determining whether or not that parents' rights should or should not be terminated without representation on that side. It was up to the judge to make that call.
Well, that's, that's not fair now. They can bring their own attorney, wouldn't they?
Oh, absolutely.
I mean, it wouldn't be fair to say the judge was doing that without them being represented.
They have to be found to be indigent in order to get the appointment.
Motion, second, all right, Mr. President?
Yep. Motion, sec, what was our, we made our original motion?
I made the motion.
Mr., uh, motion by Mr. Morrow, second by?
I guess I did.
Second by Mr. Bishop.
Reluctantly.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, a light sign.
Aye. I would like to get in further. I mean, this is a slippery slope, and I understand that, I mean, I just think to bring it in here and within five minutes, vote on it and prove it, and then 10 years from now, that number's going to be $300,000.
Oh, absolutely. Well, I can't, we just, we could look at it a little better.
What's there to look at? We know what it is. I mean, it's not, it's, it's pretty black and white. I mean, it, these people are entitled to have representation if they're declaring it. It's kind of like a public defender. If somebody commits crime there for the judge, we already paid the public defender to defend these people anyway. I mean, this is, you're right, this number will grow, and it, and it's just one of those things that's going to happen. I mean.
It's, it's, it's a hybrid one. That's a crime, subject to confinement, greater than a year, that type of thing. And so, you know, constitutionally, we say they've got to have representation. This, this is not a crime situation. This is, but it's, it's being found more and more to be in the nature of a protected right, the right to be the parent.
You know, obviously, we're doing it so we won't be sued for not offering it, but who's to say we don't offer that lesser amount? I mean.
Where did $30,000 come from?
I think that's our portion.
That's our portion, and we've.
Portion from?
We budgeted it. The judge requested the funds. It was put into his budget this year. It is going to be on a reimbursement basis, though we are not going to just write a check for $30,000 and send it to them. It will be on a reimbursement basis.
Oh, yeah. So easily, easily.
All right. Item F. No, I'm sorry. We're at item, uh, E.
Authority to publish the notice to conduct an open test of the direct recording electronic touchscreen voting device for the Rankin County Election Equipment Vault at 601 Marquette on November the 2nd, beginning at 9:00 a.m.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed with a light sign. Item F.
This is a discussion of potential action on a security, uh, deputy or bailiff to man a metal detector in the foyer of the Rankin County Courthouse Annex Building. I was asked to put this on the-
It was brought to my attention. Now, y'all discussed it, right, Jay? Jerry? Y'all had this before, y'all once before about-
Yeah, we didn't feel the need to do it then.
I don't know if I need it now.
So I was asking the sheriff what his thoughts are. I mean, Judy's got a bunch of money coming in, you know? I mean, and this is the only county building, if I'm not mistaken, that does not have some type of security that, I mean, I don't know about the, the, the rate, the metal detector thing. I know when I go to Hines County Courthouse over in Jackson, you're able to do the tax collector, tax assessor to the doors without going through the metal detector, but to get to the courts, you've got to go through a metal detector. Um, in Hines County, but that's the only one I've really been through, you know, been with. But I think somebody needs to be out there.
I think not, not only Ms. Judy, though. I think Jessica's office, your office deals with a lot of cash money as well on the same side, so.
I don't, I don't, I wouldn't be for putting metal detectors in, but I am for added security.
Well, the thing about the metal detector is, uh, there's nothing illegal without a frame of weapon.
Yeah, so just to man it.
You gotta have a man there with it.
Sheriff, how hard is it to put a deputy over there? Is it? As long as you got the money to do it, that's right.
If I have one, add to a different budget, I'll put somebody out there. The biggest problem with those positions is you have high turnover because it's-
You won't, I'll, I'll step down from here and be that guy Monday through Friday?
I make a motion to add that item to the agenda.
For Gaines to, for Gaines to be it or whatever.
Sometime later, there's some episodes every once in a while, tax assessor office.
No. Tax assessor passes the episode.
You got no way to handle it now.
Are you talking about the assessor or are you talking about people in the office? That's right.
So that's a negotiation scheme.
You know, Brian, what's gonna, what's gonna, I assume we need to make some kind of consideration for the gentleman to have some kind of desk and chair. I mean, he can just stand and speak for eight hours a day. It's gonna be a tad bit, uh-
You would have a turnover.
Yeah, we could stick a desk out there, but I don't even, they, they create, well, we'll do whatever we want to the metal detector, but I'm sound sick. I think we could actually get sued for, you know, making somebody produce their weapons, leave their weapon there.
You're inviting that.
Alright, so Jay, your motion is to what?
Not to do this.
Motion is to not do what?
I'll make the motion to do it without the metal detector.
Alright. Got a motion by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Gaines.
So you're gonna hire a part-time person?
No.
Full-time. What's the point of having part-time?
They pay benefits. Why not get a, you know, a part-time person?
Why don't we let Brian worry about what time person he is involved in something?
It'd be easier to have positions of him a low even time. Unless they think.
Alright, so you got a motion by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Gaines. They had that spot. Any further discussion?
I guess I have one thing to add to it. Any furniture related that needs to be purchased or required or whatever you need to do to- Got something to outfit him in.
We'll find something.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed with a light sign.
Aye.
He'd be the very one.
That's right, that's right. That's right.
Somebody's gonna jump him in the bathroom.
And, and Jay went against our ambulance. Don't get ambulance, tell me to get you ambulance.
That's right.
Jay's gonna be in trouble. That's right. BLS, BLS. Alright, so additional business to be discussed. Ms. Laura?
Yes, Bob is here to, um, this, this is discussion of potential action on a request of funding assistance from the Pearl Police Department to purchase from the nine-one-one funds. And he's sick, so don't get close to it.
Good morning, gentlemen. I was just gonna tell y'all, I don't know if y'all have had a chance to read over this, but, um, they're requesting some chairs for the dispatch center, which legally we can do. Uh, this is another one of those, it's gonna be a real slippery slope. This is, these are also some of the items that our legislators and lieutenant governor and governor has kind of pinpointed out. It's not illegal for us to do it. We can do it. Other counties have purchased bulldozers with the funds. You know, there's been a big rub, so it can be done, but I will say this. If y'all want to do it, that's fine. I would urge y'all to let us do a little negotiation with them, because a thousand dollars a chair, we've, the sheriff and I went through this. I don't know, maybe Ronnie was here when we did it. We, we tried to buy some of those thousand-dollar chairs and did buy them, and they're twenty-four-seven, they had the warranty. The issue was, they're twenty-four-seven, they had the warranty, but when that wheel broke off, it's three days before the guy came and fixed it. So now you've got a chair that's not occupied in dispatch. And we've just found it a lot easier to, you know, instead of buying those high-dollar chairs to, you know, keep the chairs that we've got, you know, hundred fifty, two-hundred-dollar chairs, in fifteen minutes, we can assemble one, roll it back in there, and they never missing a beat. But that's totally up to you guys. If y'all want me to talk to them about the-
Are they requesting the thousand-dollar chair?
I don't think it's, yeah, yeah, seven hundred and-
They are.
Yeah, they're-
I mean, they requested, I'm assuming it's the ergonomic-
Couple weeks ago and asked, is this something that nine-one-one funds would pay for?
Yeah.
And I'd say, well, I know that all the nine-one-one funds come through us, but generally, like, I know we bought, like, the consoles and stuff, big-ticket items. And, uh, when I found out that we couldn't do it, and I was, I don't really want to get into paying for everybody one, but, you know, Pearl's and Financial, uh, Bad Shake, y'all gonna hear this for a while, so, you know.
Well, no offense, but Pearl has the option of raising taxes. He chose not to, so he, you know. And I'm all for Jake turning things around over there, but I, I would say let's negotiate. I mean, thousand-dollar chair, you know?
I thought that was more like twenty-four hundred dollars, but-
You're trying to paint the picture prettier, aren't you?
I thought it was for the whole group.
I'd be glad to go over there with them and talk to them and, you know, let's, you know, we're gonna do some chairs. Let's get together and just, you know, pick up a-
Right, but there's nothing wrong with these kind of chairs right here.
A qual- that's what I'm saying. Let's get them a good quality chair, and I don't think that they understand that. You know, when you buy that chair, 'cause like I said, the sheriff and I have been through it. We bought that high-dollar chair. And when that wheel breaks, it's three days before the guy comes and fixes it. Now you've got a chair over there that can't nobody use, got it rolled out in the hallway at the sheriff's office, and then another wheel breaks. And it's three more days. It's, it was a constant, somebody coming there fixing the chair. That's why we got away from it.
I didn't even know we had to vote on this. I thought this would be dealt with and then, me too.
Let me say this, and this was on the federal side. I watched for twenty-eight years, every time administration changed, the head offices got new furniture. And I'm talking forty to a hundred thousand dollars in these federal offices, and their, their furniture wasn't four to eight years old. We moved our office, and I put in these little, uh, forms that said, "I want your furniture if you don't want it." To all of the other federal, I say all of them, probably six or eight of them. We equipped our whole office with used furniture, and when people come down from Washington, they want to know how I got such nice furniture. Uh, I do not like spending thousand dollars for chairs in government offices. If somebody wants a thousand-dollar chair, then I think they can go buy it. But to take it out of your money-
I have a quick question. I have a quick question.
But still, that money is- You can get a two-hundred fifty dollar chair.
It's not understanding that they all use these chairs. I didn't-
I mean, it's just an OSHA thing as far as about sitting there for long periods of time and kind of-
They do have the recommendation on the, there is an OSHA recommendation, but we're not an OSHA state, so we don't follow them.
They all use these chairs or that?
I sit in my office eight, nine hours a day.
That's the, that's the problem I've, I've told y'all about before. We've got the, you know, five additional PSAPs other than ours out there. Richland, Pearl, Flowood, Brandon, you know, one at the EOC, all have, you know, the PSAPs, you know? And, uh, like I said, we've, the equipment is owned by the county. The nine-one-one system doesn't recognize any, any level below the county level. They don't deal with any municipalities. Because if y'all, as y'all know, I think there's three hundred and something municipalities in the state. So they don't divvy it out from city to city. They deal strictly with the county as far as the funding goes. But I think, you know, I think we could work with these guys and, and find a reasonable solution.
I make a motion to allow Bob the-
Negotiate.
Negotiation process to this deal.
I thought you had that already. Did you not? That's something you need to have.
I'm never, I didn't want to come up here and, you know, buy a bunch of chairs and then y'all say, you know, hell, Bob's leaving, and y'all bought him, he's out buying chairs for everybody.
Alright, so you got a motion by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Gaines. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed with a light sign.
And that motion was for him to negotiate.
Negotiate down from the top. Negotiation of vote, that's right. Alright, so, uh, item B, Ms. Laura?
Uh, discussion of potential action, uh, to receive, of the received vendor RFPs with multi-purpose food services. We received four, um, packets, Backyard Burgers, Your Professional Shelf, T&amp;J concessions, and R&amp;J concessions. And we find that Backyard Burgers do happy best, um, percentage.
Did they come back and change theirs?
That was a-
They clarified that their number was gross.
Gross.
Twenty-five percent of gross.
Gross sales.
Oh, wow. That's a maybe-
I make a motion, we accept it.
So we'd like authority for Craig and I to work with him into a contract.
Henry, can, can you hand me that real quick, just to see?
So we got a motion on the table, Mr. Gaines.
What, what were you asking though?
For us to work out a contract with them, the specifics.
All you're doing right now is you're selecting the preferred vendor on the basis of the responses. Now we gotta go talk to them and get the contract in place, make sure we're comfortable there. And y'all will do the contract, and then we will move forward. Can I also ask, while we're talking about it, one of the questions that's most surely gonna come up will be, when do we start?
Right.
So we need to talk about how we do that, uh, as a talking point, as a starting point for that discussion. We need, I think we need to give our current vendor time to get their stuff. They have items that belong to them.
At least it's worth years' worth, I know.
They got to get that out of there. They need time to do that. If I could suggest that we sort of aim for January one, would y'all be okay?
I would suggest that January one be drop dead date.
Yeah, I'm talking about, if, if, if Backyard Burger is in agreement and we get the contract, making their start date came before us.
Yes.
And, and we will go ahead and communicate with current vendors, but they need to be moving quickly so that by the end of the year, the, the area-
They don't have to move that quickly to get it done by January first.
That's, they gonna miss, they, they'll have the four eight, I mean, the four eight stuff and all that.
Alright, so that's in your motion, Steve?
Yeah.
Okay. That's the motion by Mr. Gaines?
Hang on, second, hang on, hang on. I want, I want, real quick, I want to read this into the record for anybody who wants to watch this on TV and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Say. Backyard Burgers, twenty-five percent of gross sales. Your Personal Chef's thirteen percent of gross sales. T&amp;J concession, sixteen percent of gross sales. R&amp;J concession, seventeen percent of gross sales. So y'all can do the, the little list there and determine for those at home, uh, uh, who, who did what.
Makes somebody want to come out later, you know, pull out the, can actually transcribe it for you.
There you go.
Would you like me to read it to you?
Sure. One of those things.
Absolutely. Alright. Do we need a second? Kind of, you know, forward wish to a second. I got a motion by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed with a light sign. Motion passed. Executive session, Ms. Laura? Alright, entertaining a motion.
I make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed with a light sign. Motion passed.
I noticed the, the thing went, do it, you just cut it off?
No, I've been messing with knobs over here trying to figure out.
I would have heard it anyway, somebody messing with knobs.
I go on vacation.
Sorry, let me-
You forgot that.
No. I almost said, no, we don't read.
I'm in a board meeting at the moment, so as soon as I get out of here, I'll call you. Alright. Mr. Jones.
Good morning, bud.
Good to see you.
Good to see you. You did alright?
You're honorary this morning. I don't know what, I've, I've started this late.
No, I just went through my rampage when you got here.
Yeah, that was funny.
My God. Told me under the bus.
Yeah.
Told them that I'm the one holding them, 'cause they couldn't get addresses up here. Oh, I, I got it. I mean, that's two people calling me, "Why are you doing this to us?"
I don't know if I saw it on the air. I got some decent trucks down there, just big decent truck, get a road walking from there. Actually, they get a seat because of the port.
Good way to mount on the interstate.
They were, they're inside, well, they ain't getting on in about two weeks.
They didn't just pull us.
Well, we gonna need some, some, so we looking, on the lookout for them.
Profile crew cabs. Yeah, right. They don't want extended cabs. Just profile the crew cab trucks.
Executive session.
Go move.
Motion going to executive-
I need one myself.
For litigation?
Personnel.
Personnel and litigation by Mr. Bishop. Second by Mr. Morrow. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed with a light sign. Executive session, it is.
Did you bring the white noise machine?